Sir, do something, whatever you have got to do, help those people. There are many people are dying because they don't want to survive. Because they surrender themselves to the situation. For me, no way. I get outside and I help the people. And people said, Yusuf, you are going to get sick. No, because I'm strong. And I've got a willingness in myself that I will survive. And I will have to help those people who are suffering from the COVID nineteen. And look at me now, I'm still alive. That's because my willingness, again, willingness to survive. Back to you, thank.
Thank you, DTM Yusuf. So, the willingness to survive, like back to basic. We have to be willing to survive so that we can get through this certain condition. Okay, who wants to be the next speaker? Is Gasa maybe wants to try? Yes, Gasa. We have one guest on site here, everyone, and his name is Gasa. So, and he's willing to be our here table topic speaker, yay! Okay, so are you ready? If you're not, this is your time. Yay. Uh, let me take your screen so it will be visible also to the online participant. Okay, so this one is for you, yes, Gasa. What is your survivor, survival personality? Are you a planner, improviser, or a panicker? Okay, you ready? Yeah, which one are you, a planner during a survival condition, planner, improviser, or panicker? Yeah, I will stop.
Can I still, can I still see the question?
Okay, that's okay.
Or?
Yeah.
But my face still showing, right?
We can see your face. You are visible.
Okay, if you ask me if I, uh, what is my personal identity, I would say I am a panicker and a planner in that order. So first, um, I would be panicked so much, like, yeah, you know, when there are a lot of things going on, not, uh, uh, not fit with what we have imagined before, uh, it is humanly that we are going to panic. And yeah, after that, uh, we will try to improvise anything, try to get any better, get, uh, get the most out of it, uh, doing anything that we could only to survive. And after a while, after we figure a lot of things out, we, uh, we notice some pattern and then we try to make it more less messy. So, we try to plan, um, change the mode from firefighting scale to be more in control mode, I would say, so. So, again, in conclusion, if you ask me, who, what am I? I would say all of them in that order, from the panicker to the improviser to the planner. Thank you.
Okay, so three in one. Uh, it, experience, experiencing all these types of personality in one goal, because yeah, that's, that's us being a human, right? Feeling some feelings, uh, in, uh, in one. We can feel some feelings, we can feel different feelings just for the one certain condition. Thank you so much for sharing, yes, Gasa. Okay, I think I will invite the online participant here who wants to be, oh, I see, I saw Toastmaster Okta before raise hand. Are you still there, Toastmaster Okta?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so did you raise your hand before? Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, okay, so you will be the next speaker, right?
Yes.
Yay, okay, let me share my screen first. Okay, so, hmm, are you a corporate slave? Uh, this is the, uh, the, 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 what is it, the disclaimer, uh, before. Are you about corporate slave? So that the question is related, can be, you can relate to the question, right? Okay, so I have to, I have to share that. Okay, so this is the question for you, Toastmaster Okta. How do you handle workplace, workplace politics in the survival wood scenario? Do you avoid it or use it to your advantage? Are you ready?
Uh, I'm ready.
Cool, you can start.
Okay, uh, thank you for the opportunity. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, fellow Toastmaster. So, how I handle workplace politics in survival model scenario? I'm avoid or I am, uh, advantage? Uh, in, in my opinion, for the politics in the workplace, this is a advantage, uh, for the, our HR department. Because, because, uh, we, we have see and we have, uh, we have see about, uh, when we avoid and or we advantage. Because the politics in workplace, uh, it's all, it's so simple, but it's make me, uh, confused about the problematic about the cancer boomer or with the cancer jet. But it's okay. Thank you, back to you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Okta, for sharing a little bit, maybe this is her experience that she faced in her working place. So, yeah, office politics can be confusing, but it is something that is inevitable, everyone. Wherever you work, there is always an office politics. So, it's up to your hands whether you want to, uh, play it, play with the waves, or you want to avoid it at all cost. Okay, now, who wants to be the next speaker?
Toastmaster, I would just a reminder, maybe this is just table topic speakers. We have another session.
Thank you, Toastmaster Fany.
Guest online, guest online.
Another guest online, maybe you want to try, we have Cecilia here and also we have Murtaza. Murtaza, are you raising your hand? Okay, cool. So you will be our next speaker, right? So this is the question for you. What is it? Uh, okay, so this is a question for you, yes, Murtaza. If you find yourself in a position where you need to compete for limited resources, what tactics would you use to survive and thrive? So this is the, the limited, the limited resources here is related to working place, but it can be anywhere in our life, if we ha- if we were in a position where we have limited sources, what tactics would you use to survive and thrive?
Okay, thank you for this very thought-provoking question. Because if you really think of it, if we want to survive and thrive in this world, we have to remind ourselves that resources are limited, right? Everything is limited. Even the time for the stable topics is limited. I don't have unlimited time for the stable topic. Everything is limited in life, almost everything is limited. So if I had to compete for limited resources, what type of tactic or strategy would I use in order for things to be in my favor? Or in our favor? Well, tactic number one is I will basically make people explain and listen. You know what, I think, but you know, this is my record. For example, I have a notebook here and this is my record, you see? This is what I achieved. So I think I'm deserving of the promotion. It's not only for me, but it's also so that I can benefit the team, the community as a whole. So it's not only about showing competency, but showing that others are going to benefit as well. I think that will bring people around. Another tactic that I would use so that I am able to steer things in my favor and my team's favor is I will be letting people know that if I were able to, let's say, get a more budget, then I would also be able to do more for others. And how does that work? I would say that what you invest, this is a sort of investment. Now wording is important, you change the wording. This investment is going to be multiplied in returns, so everyone benefits. And lastly, the last tactic that I would use is I will basically make people understand that I am someone who you can get along with, who you can talk to, you can confide to. And I will keep their trust. And once people find you trustworthy, people are gonna work in your favor, because trust is a must in this world. And if you harm people's trust, then I don't think you need any other tactics. So that will be that, over to you, Tabletop Master.
Wow, big round of applause for our tactical Murtaza here for sharing his tricks, tactics to survive during a survival situation. So I really love how he mentioned about not just telling, but showing the achievements and also showing that we, what we bring to the people. And also about the, uh, investment, right? This, it was, it's like a rephrasing something, uh, to pers- persuade people to believe that we are eligible to be promoted, etc. Thank you so much for the tactics, guest Murtaza. And with that, my time here as a double topic master in the table topic session is over. Before I return the control to Tom, I will invite our timer, Toastmaster PB for the
For the timer, but all the speakers are eligible.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster PB. So everyone in table topic session are eligible to be voted. We have Toastmaster Dia, Toastmaster, DTM Yusuf, and we have guest Gasa, we have Toastmaster Okta, and we have guest Murtaza. Five speakers, and you will decide who's your favorite at after the individual evaluation session during the polling session. Thank you so much for your time. I am signing off and I will return the control back to our Tom, Toastmaster Bastian.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Rena, for the leading on section table topic master. Thank you so much for helping me as a table TTM today. For the quest and the participant, thank you so much. And I hope you come again on Eagle Toastmaster Club. And also as soon to be a Toastmaster. You enjoying today? I hope you come back again on Eagle Toastmaster Club. And for the quest, Quest Gasa and then Quest Murtaza, congratulations for the participant as a double topic master. And then for the ballot counter, will be voted on the last, last section or now?
The last session.
Okay.
I, I session, huh?
My session. So for the ballot counter, I hope you for the last session and give you the link on the QR code. Thank you so much for helping me, Toastmaster Rena, Toastmaster Pia as a role player today. And the next session is a prepared speech. We have two prepared speeches in here. First of all, for the speaker one, we have a Toastmaster Mala. And then the speaker two, we have Toastmaster Raffi, our president of Eagle Toastmaster Club. I hope you, quest and tabletop and a Toastmaster member, you enjoying for the prepared speech today. For the speak, speakers one, will be five to seven minutes. And then speaker two, eighteen and twenty-two minutes, and then the evaluator two. And then we have evaluator, Toastmaster Purwanto Lim, and then Toastma- Toastmaster Anna as a evaluator. For the speaker one, Toastmaster Mala, oh, is ready. And then Toastmaster Purwanto, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, but I don't think I can start my video. Otherwise, maybe I will be kicked off from this Zoom. Okay, so please allow me not to turn on my video.
Okay.
Okay, uh, first of all, I want to say good luck, Toastmaster Mala Manurung for doing this project. She's, he will be doing the project for inspire your audience. And the purpose for this project is for the member to practice writing and delivering a speech that inspire others, that us. And the purpose of this speech is for the member to inspire audience. That's very simple, but it's not that easy, but I believe she can do that. The time will be five to seven minute. Mala Manurung, the chosen one, the chosen one, Mala Manurung.
Announcement, announcement. To all my fellow Toastmasters and also distinguished guests here, I would like to give an announcement about the chosen people. First of all, I want to congratulate to Toastmaster Purwanto as soon to be groomed next month. Because he was chosen by a girl named LaFania.
Oh.
Oh, how do you feel, Toastmaster Purwanto?
Oh.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy. I'm still connected though.
Yeah, thank you. Now I'm going to announce another thing. Toastmaster Rena, I'm sorry to announce that you cannot be graduated this time because of your mathematics score. You need to do it again next year. I want to ask you, how do you feel?
Um, yeah, disappointed.
Thank you, Toastmaster Rena, for your honest response. I hope I didn't open the a, a bad memory. Okay, fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests, I really can feel what Toastmaster Rena said. I believe all of us have ever heard announcement, which is very happy like Toastmaster Pur or announcement like Toastmaster Rena. This year on fifteen April, I also heard the announcement that I never ex- that I never thought that I will hear that. It, it affects my whole life from that day until now, even until in the future. That day, I was confirmed that there is something wrong in my body. So there were cancer cells in my body. I, I was shocked, I was disappointed, just like Toastmaster Rena. And of course, I'm angry. Why me? What's wrong with me? Was it because of my lifestyle? Was it because of my genetics, family? I never found a real answer until today. If you ask me, I still have no answer for that. There were so many questions that I couldn't answer. At the first stage, I was very, very sad until I didn't want to meet other people. I just worked and went home. After that, I kept on thinking, what, what should I do? And I didn't reveal to many people, only to the trusted friends and families. Even I didn't ask, allow them to call me, because there will be so many questions I couldn't answer. And I have to also calm myself. Until I realized I cannot be in this condition all the time, only crying. I have family who supported me one hundred percent. And they asked me to take important steps to be cured. Therefore, finally, I took the medication. Unfortunately, it's not in our country, so it's in China. So every twenty-one days, I need to go to China and go back to Indonesia, until six times of cycle. And this time has been the fourth cycle. And after that, has it finished? No, it will be continued with another step, follow-ups, and maybe until maybe there is no ending for that, because still need to fight. Did I feel very, very weak? Yes. Do, did I feel want to go out or want to give up because of the chemotherapy? Yes. I experienced the uncomfortable and also painful side effect. I never hide that I'm weak. I don't want to be looked strong to the other people, because in the reality, I'm not strong. I have to let myself to be in the wheelchair every time I go in the airport. And let people stare at me and think that I am weak. I think it's okay for that. Why? Because it's very important to be honest to ourselves. It's okay to feel not okay. It's okay that we are not same as other people. That thing always come into my mind. Why I got it? Why the other people can continue their life? Am I the chosen one? Instead of thinking and then also asking about many things, I try to put my perspective in the other side, which is I'm the chosen one. Not everybody will get this, but I know I experienced a lot of things that might, that other people might not experience. It's not in a nice way, it's in the hard way, but I learn a lot. And that's the thing that I want to share to you. First of all, it's okay to feel not okay. If you are weak, you don't have to pretend that you are strong, because we are humans. And it's very, very okay you share that. The second time, even though you are not experienced at this stage, and if you have your family or your friends experience the things, the pain or the, it doesn't have to be related to cancer, but please be a good supporter for them. Sometimes you don't have to ask lots of questions. Sometimes you just pray for them. Sometimes you also support them with whatever they have. And do not treated them with, with like a very weak, even though they might be very weak. So fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests, I hope in this survival mood, all of us can be a good supporter and also to be honest to ourselves. Thank you. Back to you, Toastmasters.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Mala. So wonderful speech, wonderful inspiration asked, and then wonderful how to improve your speech. And I will learn that for the speech today, for the my pathway. So the next section, we have speaker two. And then we have more time, we have eighteen and twenty-two minutes. So ladies and gentlemen, quest and fellow Toastmasters, I hope you enjoy prepare, prepare speech second one. Toastmaster Anna Yuda, are you there?
Yes.
The evaluator, Toastmaster Raffi as a president, Eagle Toastmaster Club.
Yes, I'm here, I'm ready.
Yes, Toastmaster Anna, the screens is yours.
Okay, thank you, our Tom Toastmaster Bastian. Hello, everyone. Today I'm going to be the evaluator of Toastmaster Raffi Dinar Septianti. With her pathway presentation mastery, the purpose of her speech is this project is for the member to practice de- developing and presenting a longer speech. The length of speech, her speech is eighteen to twenty minutes. So Toastmaster Raffi Dinar Septianti creating personal branding without being viral. Toastmaster Raffi Dinar Septianti, creating personal branding without being viral.
When I saw a fifty thousand followers of an Instagram account, my brain said, oh, she is lucky. She can sell many things with this kind of followers. My dear fellow Toastmasters and also the guests, do you share the same opinion with me? Do you agree if having massive followers can lead you to the great opportunities? At first, I agree. Therefore, I joined some concentration classes until I found a similarity from them. The mentors suggested us, the participant, to create the video with showing our face. So, in order we reach more engagement and also in order our social media can be seen with more viewers or many target audience, we should create a short video on our YouTube shorts or Instagram reels. But unfortunately, I felt uncomfortable. Actually, I love to be a public speaker. That's why every time a university or agency, communities that want to learn from me and invites me to their writing classes, I am very happy. And also, I accept that kind of opportunity. Some publishers also chose my writing draft to be a winner. That's why I have a confidence to be a writing mentors. But when I should create a video using my face, I thought and thought and I knew that it was not my place. Then some of my writing friends came to me and also praised me. Raffi, you are very lucky. You have a great personal branding as a writer. Said them. Ah, a flat stuck my face. Yes, I admit that our neighbor's crest always looks greener. I track back to my experience as a professional writer since two thousand and fourteen. And then I also knew that actually I did the personal branding method without showing my face too much. I wrote blogs, I wrote on Canva, and I published some short stories or short, maybe like short commentary on my Insta stories and WhatsApp story. And I still got many great opportunities. And I still got many great opportunities. That's why I knew that I could make a personal branding method without being viral and still getting more opportunities with intuitive branding methods. Actually, intuitive branding methods can be done to everyone. Then my opinion, personal branding should be started from our true self. I love to learning many new knowledge. But I knew that when my heart and also my brain don't say yes, I will not go for it. I had an experience when I wanted to learn French language. I bought some books and also I installed Duolingo and I learned from those apps. But after three months, I rejected the idea. I did the pivot and I continued to learn Korean. So it means when my heart and also my brain could not work together, I would not continue my own learning journey. It means it applies to my own experience. Because I would not create a video with my face. That's why I won't continue it. Why? The main reason why I won't continue to make a video because I imagined when I should take a video for hours. After that, if I thought, oh, it's a bad video, I should retake it and then I edit it, it was a hassle for me. It took much time. I prefer to write two thousand words of article rather than creating those videos. But if you like it, you can continue to creating videos. Then I also know that our social media is the great weapon as a marketing tools and also our branding tools. That's why I share my experience about learning languages and also writing. I got more opportunities from my social media and also I got some translation clients from social media. But how to enlarge and how to make more clients if I cannot be viral? It still became the question inside my head. Because without the exact system, I cannot continue the methods. I just guessing and guessing. The algorithm always change rapidly every year. So for example, last year, short videos was a thing. And also, we would not make more photos on Instagram. But in this year, suddenly the carousel or slides can be shown on Google search and also Bing search. It means we could apply the S E O methods on our Instagram. So social media also doesn't have the exact pattern every year. I want to show you someone who had many kinds of magnificent video, but also it showed some like a crying part. Maybe you have heard Inra Kans? Few years ago, many people admired him because he showed us with many things like luxurious cars and also a big house, but actually, it was fake. And then I also took a consideration again. It means if we can create a short videos or we have big followers, it doesn't equate with the true characters of the viral creators. I also knew about some viral creators from abroad who experienced downfall. They traveled to many country and also they shared their uh money from their digital products, but actually, it was fake. We can edit many things with Canva. I thinks my methods and also my belief about creating videos is not for me. It's just the right thing. But how to start when we are totally beginner? I want to share you from the start. Branding should be started from our true characters. Yes, it's true. But how about the exact system? First, you should find the things that you love, master, or curious about. I love language. That's why I choose to dig deeper and learn deeper about English and also Japanese. That's why I can put my attention one hundred percent about learning this. You are not an expert. It's okay. For example, you love to read manga or Japanese comic. You can read and read many things. And then you also can share your recommendation titles on it. And then you also can share your favorite characters on your social media. Some of my friends who love to share their book reviews, after that, get the opportunity to collaborate with the publisher. And then they can get free books and also money because of their book review. It means you don't need to be a writer or you don't need to be an illustrator to be a good personal branding creator. And when you are curious to think, you can also share your learning progress. That's why we also know about the language enthusiasts or maybe history enthusiasts in our social media. And the second thing that you should do if you want to start the intuitive branding methods is define your goals and your why. What is your goals? How to achieve that? You should determine the roadmap from the start until the rest. If you are not an expert, what is your cause? Maybe you just want to create your communities or your tribe. So you can meet the fellow manga readers or maybe the fellow art lovers, something like that. Because in the same tribe, you can thrive. And the third, I believe you should know your branding position. So my dear fellow Toastmasters and also the guests, you should measure your own position level now. For example, you want to be known as a writer. You can ask to your peers, your colleges, and also your close circles like family. I believe they are following your social media now. Ask them. Hey, what is your opinion when you hear my name? What is your impression about my name? Be ready with the answer. Perhaps the answer will not please you. For instance, you want to be known as the writer, but your friend can say, ah, when I hear your name, I just remember about your favorite Korean dramas. It means you are only using your social media to ranting about your Korean drama. Or maybe your favorite manga, or maybe just many things outside writings. Ask a bit. And then you should start to write the list that you should do after now if you want to be known as a writer. For example, maybe you should start to share your own writings, maybe you should start a blog. If you want to be known as a programmer, even though you are working as a bank office staff, it means you should start share your journey as a programming student or maybe you can share your coding, many things. You can share the things that you are curious about or you are learning now. I remind you again, you don't need to be an expert. Because sometimes when you share your journey from zero and you continue to document your journey, it can attract more people who are in the same position with you. Maybe they will dislike you or maybe they will like you. Social media has two sides of thing, but in the reality, in our real life, it also applies in our real life. Even though we are kind to every people, sometimes there will be one or two people who will dislike us. It is the same with the social media. And then decide your desirable system. I believe if you are not comfortable with video, just doing the things that you want to do. You just want to share your photo, it's okay. You want to just share the templates or slides from Canva, it's also okay. Honestly, I have uninstalled TikTok for almost a year. Even though there are many viral content creators come from them. I don't, uh, I don't like the algorithm and also I am very hating the music from the TikTok. And I just use Instagram and also threads for my social media as a writer and also as a life coach. Just choose the best system for you. And you don't need to post every day. If you are busy as a mom, if you are busy as a worker like me, you can share on your social media twice a week or three times a week. It's okay. Because the more important things is the consistency. If you can post three times a week, do it for six months until a year. You don't need to post every day because I believe you will be burnout. And then now your target audience. Why? Because we cannot show our content to everyone. You will not get the best response. You will not get your best tribe or community. Knowing target audience means you speak like you have a meeting face to face with one person. If you speak formal, it means you speak maybe to a business partner. If you want to speak like to a friend, it means you want to speak casually. It applies on all of your whole content creation. For example, we know about McTee. This is the popular brand that we have known, has been established for many years. McTee is a fast food restaurant that has a playground inside their counter. And also in the past, they also have the mascot and it attracts many children. After knowing about it, I knew that McTee has a branding as a fast food restaurant that is friendly for a family. And then also share your journey. I hope you also not only sharing your success or failure, but also sharing your sadness and also your raw experience. But remember, please don't share your past or your scene or about your family. Just limit to your own experience as the creators. So my dear fellow Toastmasters and also the guests, now I want to invite you in our journey in the intuitive branding methods. Please don't be afraid and you can start from every position. I just remind you, please audit yourself before you start your content creation. I don't want you to be trapped in your own illusion. This is my speech about intuitive branding. I want to know about your content after this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a wonderful, wonderful how to branding yourself. I agree with you. In Toastmaster, it also can be branding yourself. Because why? Because on Toastmaster, you can branding yourself as a public speaking and a leadership. You can post it on the Instagram or your social media. I hope you, ladies and gentlemen, and Quest and fellow Toastmasters, you can applying on this portfolio, yours, social media. So because we have overtime on the agenda, I will, we don't have a break session. And I have uh the last section. It's mean a general evaluator. So you can see general evaluator, Thomas Tithin, are you there? Okay, so the next section is general evaluator. It's mean will be evaluator the section. I hope you all, the Toastmaster member and the Quest, hope the last enjoy the section. I give you the screen on you, yeah? Toastmaster Tithin, the screen is you.
Thank you, Toastmaster of the meeting, Toastmaster Bastian. Let us commence this evaluation session with the evaluations of the prepared speech. Speakers' evaluations are one of the most important elements of Toastmasters. So please join me to welcome our first individual evaluator, Toastmaster Purwanto.
Okay, thank you, Dee. And please allow me again to not turn on my video. Yeah, first of all, I want to say congratulations, Toastmaster Malah. You really inspire us uh with your speech. And I believe you are a strong woman. I also noticed at the beginning of your speech, you asked the question to all of us. Because I already know you for how many years, maybe more than five years. And I believe asking question to open your speech is your strongest way that really suit you. And you, ah, you also throw the joke to Trena. And at the beginning, it's like, okay, wow, it's fun. And suddenly, you twist that with your own um unpredictable story. I know it's not that easy. And yeah, I also know you want us not to pity you. That's why I also don't ask you many question about your condition. Especially last meeting when we have the online meeting. I also notice, ah, there's something wrong with my friend. And then during your speech, um, I noticed you can try to pause a bit. When you try to pause a bit, it can twist the plot. You can use that to twist the plot. Or maybe to bridge that to the another important point. So next time, try to pause a bit. Sometime when we deliver our speeches, we tend to speak more. And sometime we forget, uh, we forget if we can try to pause a bit to emphasize the messages or maybe just to go to another plot twist. Or maybe just to tell us, okay, something coming is the important point. And then, uh, it comes also to the conclusion. When it went to the When it went to the conclusion, I believe it can be more strength. Um what I mean is that uh stronger. If you try to remind us more, for example, um everyone, sometime let give us lemon. And as a friend, as a family, we can try to, how to say that, I would support them, not to pity them. So try to empa- empa- emphasize more. Because when we go to the conclusion, we want all the audiences get that and they will they can remember that for a long time. For um for of all, your speech is really inspiring us and welcome back to Surabaya. And I hope uh your health will be better. Okay, see you next time, Mala, in Surabaya. Back to G E.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Purwanto, for your heartwarming evaluation that you gave to Toastmaster Mala. It was a very touching and thank you so much for your memorable speech that you shared with us, Toastmaster Mala. We hope you all the very best with the treatment that you need to undergo. Thank you for sharing with us. And now I would like to invite our second evaluator, Toastmaster Anna, to deliver your evaluation.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Tithin. Congratulations, Toastmaster Ravi, for delivering such an inspiring speech, in- informative speech. Uh the purpose of your project is to practice developing and delivering a longer speech. And you did it very well with your timing perfectly. I think aligns with the requirement of eighteen to twenty minutes. There are three thing that I love from your speech. Number one is clear structure from your, you tell us about your Instagram account with a lot of follower. And then the reason why you don't like to show your face uh and joining like a club for what you like like some branding. However, you don't like to go there and then you back to public speaking again. And then you go to the tip and the last you go to the call action. So I think that is a very clear structure from your speech. The second one is the flow between paragraph to paragraph. I think it is so smooth. I can still following your story, your tips and everything that you share when you deliver your speech. And number three, I love the tips and call to actions. Uh because I think uh for me intuitive uh tip for intuitive branding method, something new and uh you can share everything clearly and you give your personal story and then you give some tip for from another one and then you make it more uh interesting. Uh with that, I would like to generally share one suggestion only that might help make your speech even more impactful and uh beautiful, I think. Uh there is about the interaction with the audience. We know that your speech longer uh almost twenty-two, twenty-three. And I just feel like this is uh I joined the workshop. No interaction between you as the speaker and me as an audience. So maybe if you give a question like, have you ever known someone like Indra? Indra blah 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 or maybe uh do you know this one? Can you uh can you please write in the chat box or maybe you can uh please open your mind? So I think it will more interactive between you and the audience. So I think that all from me, uh only one suggestion. Uh good luck for your speech, Toastmaster Ravi. Back to our G.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Anna, for your fruitful evaluation that you gave to Toastmaster Ravi. And uh now I see that there is the timers report here in the chat box for both of our evaluators. I would like to ask if the ballot counter would like to uh test the voting now or later?
Uh now, can I share for, okay. Thank you, Tithin. Okay, can I share uh my QR code for the uh ballot counter now? Wait four minutes.
Wait a while, yeah, now uh we can uh see.
Okay, uh visible?
Not yet. No, no, yes.
Ah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Can you send the link as well in the chat?
Ah, okay, I will send link for uh five.
Let us take perhaps a minute to vote for our most favorite speakers for the three sessions that we have had for today's meeting. Thank you for sharing the link as well and also the barcode for us to uh choose our most favorite speakers for the evening. And now while you are voting for your most favorite speakers, I would like to invite our grammarian uh division end director, Toastmaster Amelia. Would you please share your grammarian's report?
Thank you very much, Tithin. Wait a minute. Okay, I would like to give you my report. Okay, for the word of the day, uh I heard twice from Tithin and one from Murtaza. Uh sorry if I missed uh the other who already said the word of the day. And this is uh for the correction of grammar and also some words. For example, like uh when we say Table topic master, it's actually for the one who lead the table topic session. So so the second session of Table topic called Table topic section, not Table topic master. It's just a reminder. And next, uh so the I heard sentence like I'm avoid or advantage. Because like a poet is a verb and if you use simple pre-sentence, you can just put I avoid. Or and for advantage, it's actually a object. So it's better to put verb in front of it, so I avoid or take advantage. And the next is, uh don't forget to give for plural. Uh at the end, you should give E S or S, like for example, two prepare speech. You can say two pre- two prepare speeches and for minute, for example, seven minutes, seven minutes. And also I like uh this kind of word from Toastmaster Rena. She said about corporate slave, which in Indonesia also we call it Buddha corporat, yeah? But when I found in Google, it's sometimes people also use corporate slave in English or corporate slavery. And from Toastmaster Murtaza, which said to make things in our favor. Like uh it's also have meaning like to make things in our benefit or advantage. And a beautiful sentence versus from Toastmaster Mala, it is okay to feel not okay. And from Toastmaster Ravi, a fact a fact that slap my face. That's all my grammarian report. Back to Tithin.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Amelia, for your wonderful grammarian's report to help all of us to thrive in our communication and public speaking skills. And now may I invite our uh counter, Toastmaster Fabriani? Would you please deliver your uh counter report?
Sure. Okay, I will share my screen. Okay. Okay, right here is my uh counters report. So I will report for the most useful words in today's meeting is are. So the top one filler words is are and it followed by a. And also I found that there is a repeats word like it, it, what, what, and very, very. And it repeats uh right after saying the first word. So I think that's all from me from uh counter. Back to you, G E, Toastmaster Tithin. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster uh Fabriani, that help us with your filler words report, helping us to thrive in our speeches. And now I would like to provide my evaluation for tonight's meeting. The meeting started on time and I have received the agenda which was uh very well prepared, very neat and the roles were cle- clearly communicated before the meeting started. And guests were welcome such as at the table topic session and also at the beginning of the meeting. Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Bastian, opened the meeting smoothly and then mentioned the theme, introduced other speakers, the prepared speakers, and then kept the meeting on time. And also with a good transition between each segment and also he brought energy, enthusiasm, coherence to today's meeting. Table topics master, Toastmaster Rena shared with us the table topics questions which were thought provoking and fun, invited the speakers, the participants to share their experience to tell stories in the table topic session. Both the online and onsite participants were encouraged to join the table topic session, especially the guests. And also it was conducted on time and smooth transition between each speakers. Our grammarian, Toastmaster Amelia, introduced the word of the day at the beginning of the meeting, gives the meaning, explain about the meaning and also encourage the participants to use the word of the day and gave a comprehensive grammarian report at the end of the meeting. The good usage of the language and also we can learn about grammar from your grammarian's report. The timer who has diligently work uh on site there explained the timing rules clearly at the start of the meeting and also the timing signals were clear. And the timing report was delivered in the chat box for efficiency. And uh counter explained the role clearly at the beginning, listen carefully for the filler words, delivered the clear and also respectful report without discouraging anyone. Speech evaluators were wonderful. Both of them are experienced seasoned Toastmasters uh who delivered the evaluation wholeheartedly, in my opinion. And I was uh touched with the evaluation and also the speech that was delivered by our speakers. In my opinion, both of the evaluators have delivered a very well feedback and evaluation to the speakers. And also the Zoom was smooth, audio visuals were all clear. So thank you for today's meeting. Thank you for the expo and also the role takers who have come to the meeting this evening for the well-prepared, well-arranged meeting. Today we have gained two things from the meeting. It was enjoyable and also fruitful, educative meeting. It is such a great place to learn and practice our public speaking skills. We also learn from the insights from the speech uh from the speakers. And we invite all the guests to come again at next Eagles meeting. Invite your friends, your family members to come along with you so that we can learn and grow together. Hello Toastmasters, let us embrace the spirit of growth, thriving, and fun. Back to you, Tom, Toastmaster Bastian.
Thank you so much, our evalua- general evaluator, Toastmaster Tithin, for helping me and also evaluator all the section today. It's not about evaluation, it's not about me, it's not about us. It's about how to improve on your speech and also your yourself. Okay, my session is done. But before I go to next, my pr- my mister- my siss president, Eagle Toastmaster Club, I want to thank you so much, our quest, our role player today, uh counter, grammarian, timer, ballot counter, Toastmaster Tithin, Toastmaster Fabri, Toastmaster Tia as a ballot counter, and thank you so much, our mister president, Toastmaster Ravi, giving to me. And thank you for the giving to me as opportunity come at Tom for today, double topic of the meeting. Before I go to the next session, for the winning prepared speech and also winning table topic master and the last one, who is the best evaluated speaker? I will give the counter back on the our ballot counter. And for the quest, come back again on Eagle Toastmaster Club. We are opening and make the T M membership on Eagle and then um maybe for the last section, we'll be giving the group forum, yeah, on Eagle Toastmaster Club. Okay, thank you so much for all quest, for all Toastmaster member and also me. Thank you so much and back to you, our ballot counter. Toastmaster Tia, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Tom Bastian. I will share the winner of the meeting tonight. Uh visible or not?
It's visible.
Okay. The most favorite table topic speaker for to guest, Muntaza. Guest Muntaza has leave the Zoom meeting, right?
Yes, I also.
Yes.
He's leaving, yeah, he's leaving.
Okay, for the next most favorite prepared speaker for to T M Mala Manurung. Uh can you, how is a screenshot for the T M Mala Manurung? Me or Tom Bastian?
I think uh Toastmaster.
I think uh Toastmaster Tia for the documentation.
Wait. Okay. T M Mala, can you, positioning for the Zoom now? Where is T M Mala? Wait four minutes. Uh, how to pin the T M Mala? Okay, okay, wait. Wait. One, two, three. Okay, thank you. The next uh the next best evaluator, for the T M Anayuda. Where is T M Anayuda? Can I? T M Anaya? Wait. Okay, one. Wait, wait. Wait for a minutes. Okay, one, two, three. Okay, thank you. Back to you, Tom Bastian.
Okay, thank you so much for the inform me on the winning best, best double topic master and then we have winner for the evaluator session and then we have winning prepared speech. Before I go to next session, our Miss President Eagle Toastmaster Cup, we have photo session, right? Okay, I will do it for the tossator Mala or Rena for the leading photo section. Who want to take a picture on this?
I think I can help. Hmm for the uh onsite participant, please come here. Wait, wait, wait. Wash this house. A paper. Yeah, yeah. So that got. Oh, thank you. Hmm, Toastmaster Okta, if you mind to turn on your video. Yes, Cecilia, are you still there? For can you turn on your, should I just? Ah, for room to be, okay. Okay, then in three, two, one. Wait my, wait. What do you think? Like this? Is it okay? Where is it? I mean where the pics, where is the pictures?
Put on the zoom chat, it's okay.
Oh, I mean, I just have to paste it here? Okay, so is everyone looking good in my picture, in the picture? Okay, once more, yeah? Three, two, one. Please hold your smile, please hold your smile. Okay, thank you all.
Uh sorry everyone, before uh we go, I think for Toastmaster Mala and Toastmaster Anna, can we retake for the certificate photo? Because I think Toastmaster Okta has low bandwidth, so the screenshot is not working. And I will take for the photo, for the certificate. And I won, I would like to, Toastmaster Okta, can you help me to share screen?
Yes, I can.
Alright. So I think uh it can be, yes, in a full screen.
Uh we can take picture in move, on site?
I can take. Okay. Alright. Wait. I will pin you first. Okay, ready, three, two, one. Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Anna.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, for helping me. Okay, now back to our president, Toastmaster Raffi.
Thank you, Toastmaster Fanny, to help us to take, to retake the photos. Now, before we close the meetings, I want to call the visiting Toastmasters, who wants to share about their upcoming meeting, maybe from Toastmaster Titin or from the onsite. Uh, Toastmaster Dia, maybe you want to share about your upcoming meeting?
We're waiting for others to turn on their uh microphone. I will share that for Empire Toastmasters Club meeting, it will be conducted twice in a month. Uh one is, oh, uh Toastmaster Bastian is also here, one is online, it is on the second Tuesday of the month, and then one is offline, it is on the fourth Sunday of the month. And I would like also to invite you to Roseburg Speakers and Storytellers Toastmasters Club's meeting. It is conducted every Monday here in Surabaya or Jakarta, the time is nine P M. Nine until ten fifteen, only one hour and fifteen minutes. This coming Monday, we have Toastmaster Mas Mahathir Muhammad, who would like to practice his semi-final speech at our club. Um, if I may, I will post the Zoom link here, the Zoom link is always the same for each meeting. It is weekly, every week, Monday evening, nine P M, Jakarta or Surabaya time. Thank you.
Thank you. I see uh our grammarian, Toastmaster Amelia, raise her hand. You want to share your meetings?
Uh no, actually I want to share the T L I, everyone, don't forget to join the T L I on the third August. Uh I believe that the people in onsite come also, uh will organize it. And if you live in Surabaya, please register, the link is on the Division G group chat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And also it's open for public, yeah?
Yes, yes, yes. You can, you can invite your friend, of course.
So uh for the guest who comes today on Eagles meeting, you can uh taste our networking session and also you can learn from the mentors from our, experts here that you will not meet outside from Toastmasters with, I I think it's a reasonable price. And I will share the banner on our guest WhatsApp group. You may even though you are not a member on any club now, you can join us because it's also open for public. Thank you for the information. Now for uh I think we also have a guest, uh sorry, Toastmaster Dia from S T C. Do you want to share your upcoming meetings? Okay.
Thank you, President. Toastmasters Club will have an additional meeting this Saturday on, uh July twenty sixth at four P four to six P M, at Kolorborah Cafe in West Surabaya. And because it's an additional meeting, the format is quite different with the Toastmaster meeting format. Uh less formal and more interactive. And this format now for this meeting is a debate, I will be your debate moderator. And I'll see you soon. And also don't forget as well to support what the division, director said, don't forget to come to the Toastmaster Leadership Institute on August third, Sunday uh uh morning in, open to you, Toastmaster Raffi.
Alright, thank you. I think uh there is no others upcoming announcement. Thank you for all of the visiting Toastmasters who have uh announced their programs, and also help us as the role takers from the Empire, from S T C, and also uh from our division director. I also say thanks to our guests, maybe we can have a chit chat before uh we uh, before we close the meetings. I want to know about your opinion about our meetings. Maybe I can ask from the onsite, onsite one, the guest from Gaza, guest Gaza, do you want to share your opinion about today's meeting, your impression?
Uh he said that he will share it during our informal time.
I want to have the, uh so now uh I will close our things, but if you want to have a short chit chat with me, you can still stay here. If you have uh any business and you want to take a rest, I say thank you and our meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.